Welcome, everyone. Today is Thursday. I can't even, I can't read without my glasses. Today is Thursday, May the 17th, 2018. The time is 7:34 PM. This is the regular city council meeting, City of Leander, Texas. We're glad that you're all here and you all are welcome. If you'll please rise for our invocation, I'm gonna ask Pastor Peter Horn from Hill Country Bible Church to please lead us in prayer.
Father, we thank you for this opportunity to gather tonight as a community. We pray that your hand might be upon us and your wisdom might be given to us tonight as we deliberate over the matters that are important to the city of Leander. Lord, thank you for all these folks and community who are here. We pray for your guidance, your protection tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. If you'll please join me in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas flag?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much. You may be seated. Ms. Crabtree, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Andrea Navarrete.
Present.
Councilmember Michelle Stevenson.
Here.
Councilmember Shannon Shepherd.
Here.
Councilmember Rhonda Brusie.
Here.
Councilman, Mayor Protem Jeff Siller.
Here.
Councilmember Troy Hill.
Here.
Mayor Christopher Fielder.
Present. We do have a full council and we do have a quorum. We are eligible to do business. We're gonna move to item number four, staff comments. Mr. Kegel.
Mr. Tommons.
Mr. Tommons.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just to share a new event that we've got coming up and wanted you to be aware of it and so all of our watching audience aware of it as well. Family Fun Camp Out and Fishing Derby will be on June 1st and 2nd out of Divine Lake. We hope you join us. We've got quite a few people that have already signed up to camp out overnight. This is a great opportunity if you can't make it out to the Big Bend area or some other state park to camp right here in your own backyard and take advantage of being able to be close by and not a very long time, but learning how to camp as well. So we've got a lot of fun activities for that night and then Saturday morning, our first ever fishing derby. We're looking forward to that. Got some great sponsors, some good prizes, and a lot of fun to be had. So we hope you and anyone else would love to come out and join us June 1st and 2nd. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, sir. Do we have any additional staff comments?
No, sir.
Great. We're gonna move to citizens comments. These are to speak on an item that is not on the agenda. I have three people that have signed up to speak tonight. I'll call Cheryl Campbell. Ms. Campbell, if you'll come up and the, if you'll state your name and address for the record, the light will come on and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, all. Thank you for your service. Cheryl Campbell, 1350 Sunny Drive, Leander, Texas. I have a concern with our upcoming council and I would like to be ensured that our voice of those that have been blocked on public candidate forums can, or pages, excuse me, not forums, will be heard after the swearing-in of the ceremony. I am not the only one that was blocked on, from interacting with these candidates and I would like to know for sure that Christine Cedarquist will allow us to be heard and in what way we will be able to interact with her. Thank you and y'all have a good day.
Thank you. John Handy Bosma. Good evening, Mr. Bosma.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I've worked in politics before. Today should be a day of incredible celebration. I've been on the winning side of political campaigns and the losing side of political campaigns. One is, the defeat is just crushing. It's awful. It's difficult. I know some of you have experienced that before. And on the winning side should be a time to celebrate with family and friends and the community. And so what I say today, I say with sadness. Today is a really dark day for our community. It's a horrible day and we should all be celebrating, but it's difficult to celebrate when our most prominent citizens are using their power to threaten other citizens for using their free speech powers. So I've distributed to a number of the people in the audience comments from a prominent backer of the several candidates, several of the candidates and one of the runoff candidates in the upcoming election. And what I'd like to know is what your position is on free speech in our community and whether you think citizens should be able to discuss as citizen journalists comments you make with other political actors. As citizen journalists, we have special rights to be able to do this and yet I see threats to use the power of the district attorney to throw people in jail. These are mothers and fathers of children at home and the idea is we're gonna use the power of the DA to throw them in jail or prison. I'm really against that. And so all I'd really like to know is what's your position on this? And can for once, in this lowest, dirtiest, most dastardly, awful election in Leander history, can we once, at this time, all stand together in favor of one of our most cherished rights? The right to engage in politics and free speech, to speak one's mind without someone using the color of government power to threaten imprisonment? And that's exactly what's happened today. And while I congratulate everybody for their victories, I really would like to know where you stand on this and whether you would separate yourselves from such efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bosma. And by the way, I just allowed you to exercise your First Amendment right.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Andy Pitts. Mr. Pitts, if you please state your name and address for the record and you'll have three minutes as well.
Okay, thank you. Andy Pitts, 3705 La Hita's. And, uh, city council people and Mr. Mayor, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I am truly elated. Words can't express how happy and joyful I am that we're gonna soon be swearing in Councilwoman Cedarquist and Councilwoman Cannon. And for me, this is a, an amazing day to watch our political process work and I think they ran amazing campaigns. I'd like to refer to what Mr. Bosma was referring to. Unfortunately, him and some of his participants think that potentially breaking the law and potentially overstepping the First Amendment rights is protected. And unfortunately, there are limits to free speech, just like there are limits to almost everything. What we're really talking about in this particular issue of today is the Texas one-party consent law. And that law is very clear and it says that it is a crime, not a civil matter, a crime to intercept or record, and photographing would certainly be recording, any wire, oral or electronic communication without the consent of at least one party. Now, what they've done is they have gained access, possibly illegally, because no one has stepped forward and said who's released this information. And these are screenshots of Congress' private and confidential conversations. And unless you can have one of the people that are identified in the screenshot say, "Yeah, I released this information to this third person," then that information was deemed to be illegally obtained. And it's, it's very troubling to me that they would do this to start with. I think it's, it's, it really has reached a new low that we would see this kind of activity done. But they need to present to us people on each screenshot that has approved the release of this information, not just someone that was on a group, because we don't know if that screenshot represented the group or not. And all I'm asking the city council is that you not give them a platform to further criminal activity by reading these screenshots, which we don't really know at this point if they were illegally or legally obtained. And I would just ask that you not give them a platform to do that in front of the citizens of Leander and that you would protect the laws of this land. And there's one way to answer Mr. Bosma's concern, to stay out of jail. That's don't commit crimes and you won't go to jail. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pitts. That's everyone that have signed up to speak tonight. Would anyone else like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? I'm sorry, Mr. Bosma, you've already spoke?
No.
I can't. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda?
Happy.
Okay, Mr. Mitchie. Mr. Mitchie, I'll ask that after you're done, if you would fill out a card so we'll have it for the record, please. Thank you.
My name's Dan Mitch. I live at 1800 Milleda Run in Leander. I've lost probably more races running for office than all you put together. And I can honestly tell you that the people that beat me are doing a damn good job. I'm proud of all of you. And Troy, if you win, I'll congratulate you. If you lose, I'll congratulate your partner, the person that beat you. Ron, you know, I supported you 100%, but you got beat. You know, it's time to put the past behind us, shake each other's hand and get on as a city. We need to remember why we're here. You're elected to represent all of the people of Leander. You know, I understand taking money. There's nothing wrong with that, as long as there are no strings attached. You personally have to decide that through your own integrity. I would not question anybody getting money from anybody, as long as there's no strings attached. We need to remember again why we're here. We're here because we like this city. All right? I'd like to congratulate the people that won and I'll shake your hand, Ron. You know, I like you. Congratulations, Michelle. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchie. Would anyone else like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, great. Here now, I'm gonna close citizens comments. We're gonna move to recognitions, proclamations and visitors. I do have a couple of visitors. I see in our audience our county commissioner, Ms. Cynthia Long. Cynthia, thank you for being here this evening. Yeah, Jeff, Protem, since you know, one of the other ones, I don't.
Also want to recognize Mel Kirkland. He just got sworn in Cedar Park as a council member there.
And then they're not elected, but they spend a great deal of time and I see several of our planning and zoning commissioners are in the audience, as well as our planning and zoning chairman, Mr. Sid Sokel. Will you guys on P&amp;Z raise your hands? If you can see ya? This is always a time that is joyous and sad both, because we've had the opportunity to grow as friends with multiple individuals, but we have three swearing-ins tonight. One of those will be staying with us, Ms. Michelle Stevenson, and she will be getting sworn in first and we'll do that in just a second. We're glad to have her to, to be able to continue on council for another three years. We've had her experience for the last three years and we're looking forward to having it again for the, the upcoming three years. We have two council members that will be stepping off this evening. Our first one is here next to me, my friend, Ron Abresiz. And Ron, it's a great honor to be able to present this to you and I want to share it because it's pretty cool. So first of all, the thing that's unique about this is it has our 40th anniversary coin at the top. This is the 40th anniversary of the, the city of Leander. And this says, "Presented to Ron Abresiz in appreciation of outstanding," it's kinda hard to read because you can see through it, "appreciation of outstanding service, valuable contributions and an unfailing commitment to the city of Leander, Texas. While serving as council member place four from 2014 to 2018, he also served as mayor Protem under me and took that, that role very seriously and, and worked as kinda my sidekick for a while." And I'm gonna start at the end down here and let Councilmember Navarrete, if you have any comments for Ron, and we'll go down the dais.
None. None. Ron.
None.
Ron. I've actually watched Ron grow up through his politics, starting on the planning and zoning commission and working his way up to city council. You won't find a more serving citizen to the citizens of Leander. Ron does his homework. He knew our codes and ordinances inside and out. Ron's experience and the value that he adds to the BCRUA, which is our Regional Utility Authority System, Brushy Creek Regional Utility Authority. He was served as the president for that committee. Everything we've gone through with the city with the water rates, with everything we've done to lower those and we continue to strive to do so, a lot of that is due to Ron's work. And so from the bottom of my heart and my family's paycheck, I thank you. Thanks for your service.
Councilmember Stevenson?
I think she said enough good things about you. I think I'm gonna talk about the other side, right, Ron?
There is another side.
No. No, I, I'm gonna miss him terribly. We were on planning and zoning together. He was the one that asked me to run for city council. We've been good friends and he has a great wife, Melanie. He's been a strong advocate for Leander in everything that he's done and I, I think you all can rest comforted in that, that he has worked really hard for all the citizens here and to bring, bring the best things to Leander and for Leander.
Thank you. Ms. Shepherd?
Oh goodness. Ron and I, I think, started, um, he served a little while before I was elected and Ron and I were not immediate friends, I guess, we could say.
That's another statement.
Yeah. We, we felt like, I think we thought, very differently and I've grown to respect him immensely and I appreciate his dedication to the city and to the process and to digging deep into the details of the decisions we make. And I'm gonna miss you terribly and my hope is that our, our newly elected officials, that I can grow and have the same respect for you as well. I, I just encourage you to follow his leadership, the example he set in, in being dedicated to the process and, and learning and listening and being willing to share your opinion, even if it's different than those around you. So, thank you, Ron.
Just to echo, I, I never thought I'd be able to say this, but I consider you my friend, very dear friend. And I, it's been a 180 for me. So, I appreciate it.
Miracles happen, y'all.
I appreciate it. I appreciate it.
Mr. Hill?
I think Ron's dedication is amazing. His knowledge of the issues is always spot-on and I appreciate your service.
Thank you, Protem.
I've, I've served with Ron for eight years now. I mean, it's been a long time on planning and zoning and on council and I think he has more knowledge about the city than probably all of us up here combined. Just his, his passion, almost to a detriment sometimes, but his, his passion and, and the way he goes about his work on councils is second to none and we're gonna miss you.
First, I definitely have to thank my family for allowing me, I mean, my wife and my, my son, right now, he's, he's at church right now helping set up for a festival we're gonna have on Sunday. My wife and daughter are both homesick. They caught a cold over the weekend or something, so. But, I mean, they've, they've been supporting me from the start. They've, they've allowed me to have this, I don't even know what to call what the last four and a half years have been, because I never dreamed in my life, and I've said this before, that I'd ever be in this position, sitting up here, doing this. Especially because of, I think, my temperament is not made for this sort of thing. I'm not, I, I can't hold my tongue and I, I have a, a way of speaking that gets some people, you know, a back. But, um, but I, I have, you know, it's been great to learn all the things that I've learned in, in my, my journey here. It's been great. It's almost a bucket list item that I didn't even know I had. So, it's been a joy. I've been, I've enjoyed the last eight, 10 years serving this city. It's been a, a wonderful, wonderful time. Serving with all these people up here has, has been great and, and just to get back to what, what I said to, um, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Shepherd is, it, it's interesting how, how you think one thing and, and you learn and things turn out differently. And I think, I wish that was the way it was with, with everybody, but, you know, sometimes it happens, sometimes it doesn't. But I appreciate the fact that we got to that place. And the other person I'd really, I, I have to, to give a big shout out up here to Mayor Fielder. He, I can, I can still remember where I was the day he called me and asked me if I wanted to run for, uh, city council. I was, I was at the Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi campus, moving my son into, to college. And it just happened, I, I don't know why, but I picked up the phone because we were walking. It was hotter than heck out, but we were walking to his apartment and I picked up the phone and I, I was talking to him and he asked me if I was, you know, considering whether or not I, I think we had talked before, but that's what I think when he asked me, put me on the spot, said, "Are you gonna, are you gonna step up and do this?" And I, I said yes and I think my wife probably would have liked to have known about it beforehand. But that's not the first time I've done that to her, so I think she's used to it a little bit. So, those two things and, and third, the last people I really want to talk about, I mean, because I think they are the greatest people I've ever professionally had a, a chance to work with and be around, and that is every person sitting over there and some of them that aren't over there for city staff and especially, um, Mr. Kegel. Because without them, I, I wouldn't have been able to do what I do, what I've done up here. I wouldn't have been able to accomplish any of it without them, because I ask a lot of questions and they had every answer. I mean, I, I know, I, I'll single out our city attorney, Ms. Sines over there. I've, she knows, I've talked to her probably more than she really wanted me to. The BCRUA was a real, is a real bear and I got thrown into it and I, I've done a lot of things to try to, to make it better and I think a lot of it was talking through it with her to help me figure out how the best way to move forward, because I'm, I'm sometimes not the best at thinking things through before I speak. So, but I could go down the line and talk about every one of those people sitting over there and how they are top-notch people. They are the, the best and I think the, the thing I really want to say is that the, the two, our last two hires, the Marks, the Mr. Wilsons and Tommons, have been exceptional people and, and the thing to me is that they're in a long line of exceptional hires that this city has done in the last five, six years, I think. Every single person that we've hired since I've been here is, has been better than the one before and, and I appreciate what Mr. Kegel and, I don't, I don't know who was involved with the, that process, but whoever it is, I think they did an awesome job with it. And I appreciate every one of you and I think you are the best people that I've had to work with professionally, so I, I take my hat off to you.
Agreed.
And I, I see some of my, my brethren from the P&amp;Z. I think I served with all of them, but Mr. Cosgrove, he got on after. I think I helped appoint him, but I, I appreciate all the work that you guys do and, and I'm hoping to encourage you to continue to do what you're doing and to maybe one day, think about coming up, stepping up here, because I think you guys know what's going on. You know everything that there is to know about the city and I think we would all gain valuable service from your knowledge and putting it to use up here on council. I don't think I have anything else to say. It's been great. I, like I said, four and a half years, it's been, it's been a joy, something I never thought I would do. I'm not a, I'm not upset about anything I've done up here. I think I've handled myself well and I think I can walk away with my integrity intact, knowing that I did the best job I could. And I appreciate all the, the kind words from all the people who've supported me over the last four years specifically because of elections and such, but even the last six months, it's been great. Even actually since Saturday, it's, I've got some really kind words said about me and it's, uh, I just want everybody to know it's, uh, it's been well appreciated and I thank you.
Thank you. You're gonna be missed, Ron. And then place six, our charter requires that you resign your position if you run for another seat. So place six, Mr. Hill actually resigned to run for mayor. He's in a runoff election. And to do that, you stay seated until you're replaced. So he wasn't running for place six. He still has another election to go, but he will vacate his seat tonight because he has officially been replaced and will be sworn in here in a few minutes. And Mr. Hill, we have a plaque for you as well on the 40th anniversary. And it says, "In appreciation," it's hard to read, I put it against the black, "in appreciation of outstanding service, valuable contributions and unfair, unfailing commitment to the city of Leander, Texas, while serving as council member place six from 2015 to 2018."
Yes, Mr. Hill. We too, we've actually, we've had our moments at a time or two, I think, up here on the dais, uh, when it comes to doing what's best for the citizens of Leander, I guess, as a whole. We haven't always quite agreed, but I totally adore his lovely wife. But, she's an amazing individual. But Troy, I do wish you the best in your future endeavors.
Ms. Stevenson?
Hello, Troy. We got on together at the, the same election. And I have to say, you've, you've been one person that has made me laugh. You're a funny guy. I know, okay. Don't, Catherine, I didn't, no, I didn't say that. Okay, to you, just. But, um, I really wish you the best in, in your coming election.
Ms. Shepherd?
I echo the same sentiments of my fellow councilwomen and I know that a lot is expected of you, whether you are elected to serve as our mayor or not. I know that you've been intimately involved in campaigning for these ladies that are gonna be sworn in tonight and I know that you'll continue to have the ability to be an influence on them and the decisions they make. And I just encourage you to keep the city first, honor the, the request to let the citizens have a debate, that they can really make a, an informed decision between you and your opponent and let us come out with a, an outcome we can all be proud of. I wish you all the best. You know, we were friends when we were both elected and it's gotten a little rocky and, you know, as Ron and I both expressed, miracles happen, so here's to the future.
Thank you. Protem?
Um, I gotta say, Ms. Cannon's a little prettier than you, so I'm gonna enjoy. No, uh, um, Councilmember Hill's a, he's a really good guy. I'll, I'll definitely give him credit for that. He's got a great family. We don't always see eye to eye and sometimes we battle back and forth, but, um, we've always been able to, um, at the end of the day, you know, meet for lunch or go have a beer after, after council meeting and discuss and, and really get along and, and I hope one day very soon that we can, we can do that again.
I'd really like that.
Mr. Abresiz?
Um, I'd like to thank you for your service to the city. It's, it's always hard to take, make this choice and run for office, put yourself out there and, and I think you've handled yourself well in, in what you've done for the city and, uh, I wish you all in the future.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Troy, you'll be missed. Thank you. The floor is yours, sir.
Actually, I thought. Should I turn your mic on? Arced, but, um, anyway, I want to thank the citizens of Leander for allowing me to serve you for the last three years. It has truly been challenging, but it's always been rewarding. Public service is the highest calling and any public servant should at all times do their best to represent their constituents proudly and I've taken that seriously. I want to thank the staff for their hard work and dedication and it's my hope that you will continue to flourish here. I also wish, want to wish the current council members luck and hope that you continue to represent the senate, represent the city to the best of your abilities. To the new council members, I say congratulations. I know you represent the best Leander has to offer. Leander made it loud and clear that your vision represents their wishes and I know you will take us into prosperity that we have not seen. Thank you all and may God bless Leander, Texas.
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd. I'm gonna invite our judge, Judge Riedel. Where'd she go? She's been standing back there all night waiting on me and then you snuck out on me. Here come the judge. Come on up. Here comes the judge, come on up. And, uh, we will go by place, uh, Councilmember Stevenson. Feel free to call your family, or whoever you want with you.
I solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of City of Leander, City Council, Place Two, of the State of Texas, and I will do my best of my ability to preserve, and I will do the best of my ability to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States, and of this state, so help me God.
Are you gonna do both? Are we doing both, or just one? Okay, great. Congratulations, thank you. So as she is sitting down, I have a presentation here for you, Councilmember Stevenson, it says, "In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas," this is a certify that at a general election held on the fifth day of May 2018, Michelle Stevenson was duly elected councilmember, place two. And for place, uh, four, um, Councilmember-elect Christine Sederquist, come on up. Feel free to have whoever you would like with you.
I, Christine Sederquist, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of City of Leander, City Council, Place Four, of the State of Texas, and will do the best of my ability, and will do the best of my ability to preserve, protect, and defend the constitutions and laws of the United States, and of this state, so help me God.
You wanna go down and meet her? If she's gonna come down and meet you, you guys swap out plaques. Stand right there, stand right there. We're on this guy's. Do you have your hat on, everyone's coming up? Thank you, Mr. Aberzis, and, uh, Ms. Sederquist, if you'll please join us on the dais, and I have a presentation for you, says, "In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas," this is a certify that a general election held on the fifth day of May 2018, Christine Sederquist was duly elected councilmember, place four. Congratulations. Councilmember-elect Marcy Cannon, place six. Where'd, oh, there's Judge.
I, Marcy Cannon, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of City of Leander, City Council, Place Six.
Of the office of City of Leander, Council, Place Six.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will do the best of my ability.
And will do the best of my ability.
To preserve, protect, and defend.
To preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state, so help me God.
And of this state, so help me God.
Judge Riedel, we want to thank you again for being here this evening. Now, she is coming up, "In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas," this is a certify that at a general election held on the fifth day of May 2018, Marcy L. Cannon was duly elected councilmember, place six. So everyone that has been elected and come up on the dais while I've been mayor, I've made the same statement to, I'm gonna make it to you two as well, to, uh, to remember that every decision that you make here affects somebody in some way, shape, or form, and if you will keep that at the undermine, uh, of everything that you do, you will go very far. So thank you guys for both being here. The time is eight eleven, and we're gonna take a recess so they can come down, and you guys can, uh, congratulate them and visit. Time is eight oh nine, eight eleven, sorry. The time is eight twenty-six, we're gonna reconvene and move to our consent agenda, this is an action item, council.
A motion to approve.
Second.
It's been a motion made for approval by Councilmember Shepherd, with a second by Councilmember Navaretti, so further discussion? All in favor? Motion, are you voting, all in favor? Motion does carry.
We'll move on.
It's okay, we're gonna move. Um, public hearing, no action, we have none, we do have public hearings with action. Item number fifteen, conduct a public hearing regarding ordinance case eighteen dash O R dash zero zero one, to amend the composite zoning ordinance to amend Article, uh, six, Section fourteen A regarding dumpster enclosures and provide for related matters in Williamson and Travis Counties, Texas. Mr. Yanis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, council, welcome new councilmembers. Um, this item is a, uh, public hearing on an ordinance amendment that was requested, uh, by, it was actually brought up by the Planning and Zoning Commission, Commissioner Hines had introduced this item regarding the screening requirements for, uh, paper recycling dumpsters, and the council, uh, discussed the commission's recommendation previously, so this is actually just the beginning of the ordinance amendment process, and you'll see on the screen what the, uh, ordinance amendment that is being proposed is, and the commission unanimously recommended approval of this amendment at their meeting last week, so I'm happy to answer any questions that the council has after the public hearing.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Yanis.
Absolutely.
This is a public hearing, I'm gonna open the public hearing at this time, I do have one speaker, Dawn Pratt. Ms. Pratt, if you'll come up, state your name and address for the record, and the clock will come on, and you'll have three minutes.
Dawn Pratt, four one two Mesa Grande Drive, um, I just wanted to, um, thank Mr. Hines and to the council for getting this passed through quickly, we've been working on trying to get the dumpster at school for four years now, so we're pretty excited that we're almost there, we're almost there, so I just wanted to, just, I just wanted to say thank you, and congratulations, and congratulations, and congratulations, thank you.
You bet. Thank you, Ms. Pratt. The public hearing is still open, would anyone else like to speak on this item? Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing, we're gonna move to discuss and consider action on the first reading of an ordinance regarding ordinance case eighteen dash O R dash zero zero one, to amend the composite zoning ordinance, to amend Article six, Section fourteen A regarding dumpster enclosures, and to provide for related matters, Williamson and Travis Counties, Texas. Counsel?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
There's a motion made for approval by Councilmember Navaretti, with a second by Councilmember Shepherd.
Yes, and I would like to thank Ms. Pratt for bringing this to our attention, and thank, um, Commissioner Hines for getting ahead of this and bringing it to us.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second, is there a further discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote, all in favor? Motion does carry unanimously. We'll move to item number sixteen, item number sixteen, conduct a public hearing regarding special use permit case eighteen dash S U dash zero zero four, to allow for the expansion of the parts and steel fabrication business, storage, sale, and repair, restoration of classic cars, adding base material and/or gravel for part storage, and additional metal wall enclosures to building on one parcel of land, approximately four acres, plus or minus in size, more particularly described by Williamson Central Appraisal District Partial R zero three one two five five, and addressed as ninety-eight hundred R M twenty-two forty-three, generally located to the northwest of the intersection of one eighty-three A toll, and R M twenty-two forty-three, Leander, Williamson County, Texas. Mr. Yanis?
Thank you, Mayor, this is also a public hearing for a special use permit case, this property is, I think, uh, everyone is well aware of, is at the intersection of, uh, twenty-two forty-three and one eighty-three A, it is a, uh, automobile salvage yard, it was established prior to being annexed into the city limits, so the use is grandfathered, the applicant is, uh, proposing to, uh, modify the use, and in order to do that, um, needs to receive approval either through rezoning or through a special use permit. Uh, because this is a, a transitional use, the best approach is the special use permit in this case, to allow for a portion of the use of the property to be expanded, uh, related to the fabrication of steel, as well as the restoration of, uh, automobiles, um, this will ultimately result in the, uh, property being in better condition than it currently is, uh, over the course of, uh, this ten-year special use permit, uh, before the property ultimately redevelops for its permanent use. And, uh, the applicant is here, and I think he would like to present to the council, and, uh, then I'd answer any questions after the public hearing.
Mr. Ingram, you wanna come on up?
Good evening, my name is Scott Ingram, uh, fifty years ago, I started a steel fabrication business way out in the country, on twenty-two twenty-two near six twenty. Some people know it as Four Points Northwest Austin, used to be out in the country. Anyway, Austin grew, encircled my shop, and now TexDOT is taking a part of my property to relook, rework the roads. Uh, the effect of that change is forcing me to move. I would like to move this thriving business to be part of Leander, where I will fit in, where my business will help improve an eyesore that you, that you presently have, a rundown car junkyard. The folks I've been working with in the city, for which I appreciate their help, uh, seem to like this plan. We'll be bringing a new appearance to the location, new people to the community, and expanding the tax revenue to the city. We will be receptive to area youth who want to apprentice and learn this much-needed craft of steel fabrication and welding. Obviously, I'm probably not gonna be around another fifty years to operate this, so I'm only looking for a short-term, uh, location. In the long term, we know this, uh, location will be redeveloped again, and, uh, we look forward to working with the city, uh, to make that new future be the, part of the new Leander, and I would appreciate your support of this project.
Great, thank you, Mr. Ingram.
Okay.
This is a public hearing, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing at this time, would anyone like to speak on this item? Would anyone like to speak on this item? Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and, uh, move to discuss and consider the first reading of an ordinance regarding special use case permit eighteen dash S U dash zero zero four, to allow for the expansion of the parts and steel fabrication business, storage, sale, and repair, restoration of classic cars, adding base material and/or gravel for part storage, and/or additional metal wall enclosures to building on one parcel of land, approximately four acres more or less in size, more particularly described by Williamson Central Appraisal District Partial R zero three one two five five, and addressed as ninety-eight hundred R M twenty-two forty-three, generally located to the northwest of the intersection of one eighty-three A toll, and R M twenty-two forty-three, Leander, Williamson County, Texas. I met with Mr. Ingram two months ago, has it been that long, or longer?
December.
It was December, okay, I knew it was quite a while, uh, December, and he, he, uh, we met and discussed the plans that he was wanting to do, um, this site is, uh, a junkyard now, if you would, and I hate to use that term, but that's, that is what it is, and it's, uh, a little bit of an eyesore, but it started out in a facility, um, long ago that has been kind of, it's actually kind of a landmark here in town, and, uh, Mr. Cantwell, who owns that, has been, uh, a, a great citizen and, and beneficial to the community, and it's been, it's a, it's one of those things that's just a transitional, and the city's kind of going around it. I've seen what he, uh, what he wants to do, I think it's a great way to clean it up, and it hasn't come without, uh, probably more expense than, uh, what Mr. Ingram had felt, because when you start getting into where cars have been stored for a long time, there's environmental issues he had to go through, and some of those items to, uh, to look at what that is, so, um, knowing the amount of work he's done, I'm gonna go ahead and move for a, uh, for approval, is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, I'm gonna recognize Councilmember Stevenson with the second, you did second it, right?
Yes, I did second it.
I think all three of y'all did at the same exact time, but, uh, I'm gonna recognize Councilmember Stevenson with the second.
Can I second that?
Um, is there further discussion?
I, I would just want to commend you for taking this on, and I'm looking forward to see what you do with the project there.
I think we're gonna ask you to, when you do a grand opening, to have us out, if you don't mind. Great, they're great. So we do have a motion and second for approval, is there further discussion? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Cannon?
Mr. Mayor, I had a question, the, uh, Mr. Ingram, very graciously in his proposal, had offered, um, to add additional landscaping around the perimeter and to clean up the front, obviously, this is interim use, so I understand why it isn't necessary around one eighty-three A, but I was curious, um, as to why staff was recommending, um, no additional new landscaping on the frontage part, which would, would be seen for-
Mr. Yanis?
-the ten years.
I don't believe it was Mr. Ingram's intent in his proposal to add additional landscaping, and when we clarified that with him, his intent was to, uh, keep the existing landscaping only, and so that was the presentation made at P&amp;Z.
Okay.
You can ask him if he'd like to add some additional landscaping, I'm sure he'll-
In his submittal, he said improve landscaping, including removal of volunteer junk trees that have grown up around the building.
Right, he just meant cleaning up the existing landscaping, that's, that's there.
Okay, alright, okay.
Anything else? Great. We do have a motion and a second for approval, further discussion? We're gonna take a vote, all in favor? And motion does carry. We do, we will have a second reading on this item, but thank you, Mr. Ingram, for being here this evening. We'll move to item number seventeen, conduct a public hearing regarding special use permit case eighteen dash S U dash zero zero five, to allow for a dog daycare and boarding facility and a food truck bar and patio on one parcel of land, approximately four point nine eight acres, more or less in size, more particularly described by Williamson Central Appraisal District Partial R zero two three nine five seven, and addressed as four four one one Oak Creek Road, generally located to the northeast of the intersection of C R two seventy-nine and Oak Creek Road, Leander, Williamson County, Texas. Mr. Yanis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is also a public hearing on a special use permit case, uh, this piece of property was annexed into the city, I think in two thousand and sixteen, um, it's in a mixed-use corridor on the city's future land use plan, uh, the, uh, mixed-use corridor, um, is primarily intended for, um, local office and higher-density residential uses, um, however, the, uh, property is a single-family residence that had a horse, um, stable on it, and the applicant is, uh, who recently purchased the property, is proposing to, uh, utilize the property as a dog daycare facility, as well as in their original proposal to add, uh, a food truck, uh, site, as well as some outdoor dining area to the site. Um, at the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing last week, there were a number of, uh, residents nearby that expressed concern regarding noise, uh, the proximity of some of the uses to the property line, uh, and screening and other items, and so, the Planning Commission's recommendation was for the council not to take action on this until the applicant had addressed the neighbor's concerns regarding those items. Uh, the applicant has presented some changes to their request, and I believe y'all have a red line of their request up on the dais, and I will let them speak to those items that they've, uh, worked through with the, uh, neighbors, um, and, uh, then the, it's at the council's discretion how to move forward, and so, uh, this time I'd just turn it over to the applicant to-
Great.
-to prepare, present.
If you would just state your name for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Michael Ballard, uh, this is Kaye Lillen, uh, we're at four four one Oak Creek, and good evening. Okay, so, our, our vision is a high-end, uh, dog daycare boarding facility situated on a serene farm. Uh, at the previous hearing, our neighbors raised four primary concerns, first is property value. The second concern they had was the noise that would be generated from our operations. And third, they were concerned about how we would secure the dogs. And fourth, they were worried about litter from potential patrons. In response to these concerns, we've significantly altered our application. As to property values, the first thing that we did was we removed the food truck bar and patio proposal. That use was going to alter the land more than we want to, and it would create noise and be something that you would be able to see from the road. So we simply removed that proposal. Additionally, we propose adding additional landscaping at the corner of 279 and Oak Creek, along with landscaping along Oak Creek to be added in conjunction when we build the additional proposed buildings. As to noise, we've added additional screening on the backside and the west side of our property, so that there's more trees and foliage to screen the noise. And additionally, in our letter of intent, we added a requirement that the boarding facility itself would have no outdoor runs. The dogs would be inside, and when they were outside for play, it would be supervised playing. The dog daycare itself, which is when the outdoor play would occur, would be during business hours and not in the evening. As to the, how the dogs would be scared, of course, it's in our interest to keep the dogs secured. If the dog daycare loses dogs, we're not going to be in business very long. But we also did put in the proposal that any area where the dogs would be, would be securely fenced. As to the litter issue, we believe removing the food truck bar and patio addresses that, because there won't be patrons on the property. It'll be the dogs, and keeping in line with our vision for the business is a beautiful serene property, so keeping it clean is in our interest also.
Great. We are going to do the public hearing before we ask you any questions, if we have any. So stay close, and we will be, we will be right back. So this is a public hearing. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. I do have two people that have signed up to speak. Mike McAdams? Come on up, Mr. McAdams. If you'd state your name and address for the record, you'll have three minutes.
Yes, sir. Mike McAdams, 4304 Oak Creek Road, Liberty, Leander, Texas. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, the council. I was the one that was concerned about the noise and the property values going down. And also, too, what has occurred is, I thought about this all week. What I understand is they're proposing to do, to put these animals, these dogs, which, I'm a dog lover, I love animals. My wife is crazy about animals. But here's the thing, they're going to plan on building an inside place for these dogs to be housed at for the noise level. Well, where's the sewage going to go to when they wash and clean up this facility? See, that's the thing that has not been brought to y'all's attention. Because if you look back here at the back, anything that runs off is going to run right into Mr. Ham's creek bottom, right back on the northeast side there. And, I mean, there's just a couple of issues here that's just not making any sense to me about this facility. And that's about all I got to say.
Great. Thank you, sir. Patricia Hamm?
Good evening. My name's Patricia Hamm. I live at 3355 County Road 279, just north of this property. In addition to Mr. McAdams' property value and noise was our main concern, my husband and I would first like to thank Katie and Jason for working with us to address some of the concerns we did have. They didn't have to do that, and they did go a step above and beyond. We did have the one more question about the runoff waste, et cetera, which we didn't even think about until we were standing in the parking lot. The creek that Mr. McAdams mentioned runs fully through our property, so any runoff will go directly in that creek against our house there. And that's really about it. We are not 100% against it. We just have a little bit of hesitation being completely for it yet without the additional answers to some of these questions.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Hamm.
Thanks. Congratulations on y'all's positions.
This public hearing is still open. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Okay, hearing done. I'm going to close the public hearing. Mr. Yanis? Can you help us address the washout? What is, is there any provision, or what's the...
Well, those things would typically be dealt with at site development stage. I'm sure the applicant has probably thought through how they're going to handle that, so I would defer to them on that.
Please, come on up.
Absolutely.
Well, so it would be our understanding we wouldn't be allowed, it would actually be illegal to leave the dog waste on the property. The two best solutions that we've read from the EPA is either connect to the sewage, which is on our property line, or to contract with a waste disposal company. But no, we wouldn't be able to leave the waste on the property and wash down the creek.
Counselor, any questions for the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I had a quick question. Have you spoken with the resident on the east side of the property, to the right of the property?
Right now, that is an empty field. It's being developed, but it's going to be a multi-house division, it looks like. I think they're going to put a wall up.
Oh, okay. So that little, to the right, I see a metal-built structure right on the east side.
Oh, that field. I'm sorry. I'm a little dyslexic there. That neighbor, that's an empty abandoned lot. Apparently, some meth heads were living there recently. But right now, it's just empty. We have. We have contacted his daughter on Facebook, because it's the only person we could find.
No. And then do you intend on generally keeping the same layout as originally submitted?
Yes, we intend to modify the property as minimally as possible and keep basically its character as it is.
Thank you.
So on the property, we were shown the schematic, and so you're taking away the patio and all the parking, and you're just going to leave the existing house, the existing barn, and then you're adding the dog kennel. Is that it?
That is correct.
Okay.
Well, and I guess, I think there's a small little reception area where the dogs would get dropped off.
Okay. Oh, yeah. And there's a small parking lot there. Yes. Okay. Yeah.
So you have plans for 30 kennels?
That is the goal, yes.
Does that mean 30 dogs, or does that mean you could double some?
It would mean 30, so the way that we intend to run the daycare is the dogs will go out in small groups, and they would come in and be kennelled during non-playtime. So it would mean a total of 30 dogs, boarding and daycare.
Okay. Okay. Well, I think there's a big need for this.
Yes, everybody loves their dogs.
And I see people all the time asking for recommendations, so I wish you the best with this.
Thank you.
Is that a motion, Ms. Shepherd?
Yes, I will make a motion to approve with the modifications.
And I'll second it.
There's been a motion made for approval by Councilmember Shepherd, seconded by Councilmember Stevenson with the modifications of removing the food truck patio, the red lines essentially, if we would. Is there further discussion, counsel? Okay, we'll take action. All in favor? Motion does carry. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Best of luck.
We're going to move to item number 18. Item number 18 is conduct a public hearing regarding zoning case 18-Z-008 to amend the current zoning of LC 2B Local Commercial to PUD Plan New Development with a base zoning district of LC 2A Local Commercial on one parcel of land, approximately 7.803 acres more or less in size, more particularly described by Williamson Central Appraisal District Partial R032156 and generally located to the southeast of the intersection of Lakeline Boulevard and Sautern Lane, Leander Williamson County, Texas. Mr. Yanis?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a public hearing on a...
Thank you. I'm sorry. Councilmember, you're going to recuse yourself on this item?
Yes, I'll be recusing myself.
Do you want to state a reason, or do you just want to recuse yourself?
Well, I'm a member of this church, and I just didn't want to view this as improper of me voting on this item, so...
That's appropriate. Thank you. We'll wait on you till you go to the back. Great. Mr. Yanis?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a public hearing on a rezoning case for the LDS church. They have proposed the rezoning of this property at the entrance to the Carneros Ranch subdivision. This property is currently zoned LC 2B Local Commercial. Because this is a street that enters the neighborhood and has commercial at the entrance, the composite zoning ordinance requires maximum setbacks as well as continuous building frontages along the street. Due to the layout proposed by the church, they needed some waivers to some of those requirements, and so the best option for them was to propose the PUD in order to achieve the layout on the site for the church. And so what they're proposing is to modify the setback requirements along Sautern and also along Lakeline to allow for some of the existing landscaping to remain that would otherwise be required to be removed by our composite zoning ordinance. Those are the invasive species, the ashed juniper trees. The provision not to have to comply with the continuous building frontage for the church tract, and also the removal of the minimum percentage of windows facing the street for the church. And so if you look at the layout that is being proposed, essentially, the maximum building setback is being relaxed in this area, and the continuous building frontage is also being relaxed, so that this would be the site layout. This is the area where there's the existing cedar trees that the church has requested to be able to retain without having to remove as our ordinance currently requires. On, that's basically everything on Track A. The increased landscaping that they're proposing to do would be in this area here, here, and here. And then on Track B, the applicant had requested the ability to have a driveway onto Lakeline. Track B is not part of the church development. It's actually for future development. The city's access management ordinance would not allow for a driveway onto the arterial. It would require that there be interconnectivity of driveways through the site and a street intersection at this location as the Gilpin property, which is the property just adjacent to it, develops in the future, which is an extension of the Vista Ridge subdivision. There will be a street network that will be extended to intersect with Lakeline and provide that access in the future. At the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing last week, the commission recommended approval of the applicant's request with the exception of the driveway onto Lakeline. So the P&amp;Z recommendation is to approve everything that the applicant has requested, but not allow the driveway onto Lakeline. So they did allow the cedars to remain in that location. And the applicant is here and has a presentation, and so I'd like to have them come up and make their presentation, and then I'll answer any questions.
That'd be great.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. My name is Mark Williams. I'm a resident of Texas, live in Dallas. And I am a church employee for the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. And my assignment as a project manager is to help facilitate the feasibility studies of future purchases for property for new building construction. And then I also work with the architect and the contractor all the way through completion of the project until it's turned over to our local facilities manager. And we do have a number of members of the church here tonight, and I appreciate their support, and I appreciate this opportunity to talk to you about this. We first found this property, and we're excited about it. It seemed like a nice location for the church, and we came across some of the zoning issues that we weren't able to overcome. And I think it was in December, we met with city manager Kent, as well as Tom Yanis, and some of the planning staff, and they recommended a PUD. And this is a little bit unusual for us, but we went ahead and went forward with that. It's almost been a year now since we started this feasibility study, and we think we have everything worked out. Planning and zoning seems to be appreciative of the efforts, and I really appreciate Tom and Robin Griffin's efforts to help us get past the issues, the challenges that the planning and zoning department was dealing with. We used, or hired, a local consultant, Stefan Ferris with Ferris Design here in Austin. And Stefan's going to show you a few things. Now, this is an actual picture of the building, and unfortunately...
Did you bring the mountains, too?
Unfortunately, the hill country mountains are a little more exaggerated here, but that's kind of a Utah draw-up there, but the building doesn't change. And there's some things associated with this elevation that I think will help you understand what we're trying to deal with with regard to windows and the zoning requirements for that. But the church, for information, we don't have paid clergy. It's, the congregations are based by geographic location, and so we have a maximum size that we allow in our buildings, but we have more than one congregation that meets in the building. So most of our buildings are designed to hold three congregations, but we put in four, so they get really crowded. They usually start at 8:30 in the morning, they end at 4:30 in the afternoon. And they're at the point now where we're at four, and most of the buildings in the Austin area, and we're needing to move forward. You may be aware of the project that we're doing on Monroe Reagan as well right now. That's a project I'm in charge of, and we finally got our permit on that, and we're moving forward, and things are going well there. But the issues associated with mega churches and that sort of thing, we don't have that situation, because we have a limited amount of people and seating. And so that becomes something usually workable. And situations where we put churches like this in residential areas, it's never really worked out to be a problem. Initially, we thought, well, let's propose a driveway in case some of the local citizens were concerned about congestion. But the zoning doesn't allow for that, so we put just the two in. Well, I'm going to have Stefan come up here and finish off for me on some of this stuff, but I'd be glad to answer any questions after Stefan presents the rest of this.
Thank you, Mark. Mayor, council. My name is Stefan Ferris. I'm a land planner and landscape architect. Been assisting the church on this project. I'm going to go through a few slides. Hopefully not take up too much time here. Let's see here. These are some other churches in the area. This one is probably, whoop, that is not the laser. That is the laser. This one is probably most close to where we are currently on Baghdad, and another church over in Cedar Park. You can see a similarity in the architectural style. The church runs a very tight ship. They do a very good job of building churches all over the world. I'm going to skip through here. The site we have here, 7.80 acres on Lakeline. I flipped north here. North is actually to page left. This is the existing Carneros Ranch subdivision, Sautern Drive. This is an amenity center that's being built as part of the Carneros subdivision, and they have an entry sign here. You can see the tree cover that exists here at Sautern and Lakeline. We're proposing to keep those existing cedar there as a buffer and to just give more of a, you know, keep in line with the single-family feel of the area, community feel. There aren't a lot of hardwoods on the property. The few that there are, we've done a pretty good job of saving most of them. You'll see on the site plan here. Actually, I'm jumping ahead of myself. This is just the overall conceptual land use plan, the two tracks, approximately four and two, three acres here to the right. I think it's, or interesting to note, or good to note, that Track B, we're not really asking for any waivers. It would substantially comply, actually, it would comply with current codes and regulations that are in place effective currently. And Track A is that we're asking for the waivers for. And if the track were, for some reason, in the future, not to be a church, then we would revert back to the codes and ordinances that would be in place. So the PUD only applies to the church use. This is the conceptual site plan we put together, again illustrating, bubbling out the cedars that we're proposing to keep as a buffer from Lakeline and to frame the sign of the neighborhood. These are some of the hardwoods we're saving down in this corner, which explains a little bit of why we rotated the site plan a little bit, why it has a little kink to it, as well as it offers an area up here in the northwest, I'm sorry, northeast corner to put our detention, which is required by city code. And as Tom mentioned, per our discussions with P&amp;Z, we've eliminated any connection on Lakeline if this track were to be developed in the future. That's something we'd have to work out further down the road with city staff. This is the conceptual landscape plan. This substantially complies, and actually is superior to the current landscape ordinance is in effect for the city. We are offering these enhanced landscape areas along Sautern Drive, where we're going above and beyond the requirements to add additional shade trees and landscaping where the sidewalks would be. And we're not also, we're also not putting any parking past the building face, create more of a pedestrian neighborhood scale to the structure. And one of the other requirements of the landscape, sorry, of the ordinance has to do with the building frontage, as Tom mentioned, and also has to do with the window opacity. So you're required by code to have a certain amount of glass in your building facing a streetscape. The church, this is exactly the elevation we'll be constructing, and we do have windows that face the street. We have large picture frame windows on the sides of the church that they may not face the street, but they're immediately visible from the pedestrian or vehicle when you drive down. when you drive down Saw Turn Drive. And so we think that that's an alternative equivalent compliance to the code, and offering additional landscaping, we feel mitigates that. This is also an image of an outdoor pavilion that may occur in the future. We were just allowing the provision for it, and that would be just to the south in the Cedar Bridge. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. This is a public hearing. I'm gonna open the public hearing at this time. We do have three speakers. Janet Jacobson.
Mayor, before she speaks, can I ask Mr. New if he could just close the blinds back there? The light's coming from traffic coming this way, or just a little blinding. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. My name's Janet Jacobson. Excuse me, I'm nervous. I reside at 216 Hidden Mesa. My husband and I moved our family here about, well, it was exactly 20 years ago this month. We came to Leander looking for good schools and good people. We found both, and we've been active members of the community. This building is an important thing for our area. Our congregations are growing quite rapidly. We're outgrowing the buildings that we have. We promote family, faith, community, service, all the things that make this country a good and strong place. And I would like to, I'm actually here in the place of Catherine Nance, who spoke at the P&amp;Z commission meeting last Thursday, but she couldn't be here tonight, so I too need glasses. I would like to just paraphrase some of her statement because she put this very well. She said, "We are good stewards. We take care of our own buildings. We make sure that the," again, I'm paraphrasing, "make sure that the grounds are always clean and look well. We value our faith, but we also value the faith of others. We appreciate those around us, and we expect them to respect our faith, and we expect of ourselves that we will support them in what they believe." We are a faith-loving people. We have a Christ-centered church. We do good all over the world. We have huge humanitarian projects that we do without a lot of applause. We love to serve and serve quietly. And I think that this building would be a huge advantage for this community because we offer programs for youth, we offer programs for family. We are very much aware of the situations in a lot of families these days, that there are a lot of outside influences that affect the children in our communities, a lot of dangers. And we want to be here to be a friend and a support to this community, and whatever we can do, we are willing to do. And I really appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Forgive me for my pronunciation. Rubel Lucero? Am I close?
Close.
I asked for forgiveness first, so.
Rubel Lucero, 305 Longhorn Cavern Drive. I have lived in Leander for 18 years, and am a member of this church for 35 years, and very familiar with these buildings. For instance, this building that is planned, we have, our stake has three buildings like that, two in Cedar Park and one in Marble Falls. Now, these buildings and properties are maintained to a very high standard by a very professional local team, and they are on top of it. For instance, our building in Marble Falls has been around since 1980, and if you were to walk through that building, you wouldn't think it's more than five years old. Now, since this building will be our state center, we would have state conference there twice a year. Now, before we can have this conference, it goes through a thorough inspection before we can have this conference, and they are maintained superbly. And I think it would be a great addition to our community. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Rich Bradley?
Hi, Rich Brady, 1514 El Cielo. Rubel's a tough act to follow, but I'll do my best. My name's Rich Brady. I live at, as I mentioned, 1514. That's in the Grand Mason neighborhood of Crystal Falls. A great number of us here tonight want to express our support of the proposal that's been presented. What I want to speak to specifically is just the need. The need that we have for a building north of the two buildings that were shown to you. It's been noted that our faith is unique in that we are organized by geographic boundary. Our local church congregations are typically organized with 200 or 300 members and are known as what we call wards. Collectively, these wards units are organized then into area units, which are known as a stake. Our church buildings are very important to our wards and stakes and are central in our effort to increase our faith and our membership and to strengthen our families, as Janet mentioned. Related to our situation, in order to attend worship services, Leander residents that are members of our faith travel south, and they attend one of four ward units that are located in those two buildings that were shown. These buildings are shared with wards from other stakes, from Round Rock and from Austin. Our stake administrative offices, which are typically found in our church buildings, we don't have that luxury because of lack of space. And so what we've had to do is to lease some office space in some building suites located off of South Lake Line Boulevard until the new building is constructed and built. Our Sunday worship services do begin as early as 8:30, and the final congregation leaves after 5:30. And there is significant overlap, and so as a result, there can be over, you know, between 400 to 500 people passing in these halls on any given Sunday, and so it can be rather hectic. During the week, our buildings are also near capacity with wards sharing the building most evenings to provide activities and programs for our members. Scheduling events and activities at one of these buildings requires what I call, what I put down on paper, a healthy dose of cooperation, communication, and coordination between each of the ward units. So as Leander population grows, as has been anticipated, additional space will be required. And so we wait very eagerly for a positive vote so that we can go forward and begin to, I would say, more reasonably use our space in the buildings that we have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anyone else like to speak on this Okay, hearing now, I'm gonna close the public hearing. We're gonna move to discuss and consider the first reading of an ordinance regarding zoning case 18-Z-008 to amend the current zoning of LC-2B Local Commercial to PUD Plan Unit Development with a base zoning district of LC-2A Local Commercial on one parcel of land, approximately 7.803 acres more or less in size, more particularly described by Williamson Central Appraisal District Partial R032156, and generally located to the southeast of the intersection of Lake Line Boulevard and Saw Turn Drive, Leander, Williamson County, Texas Council.
I have a couple of questions.
You bet.
Mr. Yanis, can you explain to us the future transportation plan in regards to Lake Line Boulevard and what that's gonna look like?
Sure. It's gonna be the same as it is to the south, so it's gonna be a four-lane divided arterial with a center median all the way, well, all the way up to Hero Way West initially, and then it'll extend further north than that.
If this waiver was granted, would that median, there's not a median now, but that median that eventually would be there, would there be a break in it for this?
What the applicant had proposed was a driveway with a median break.
Okay.
Right.
My other question may be for Mr. Ferris. Track B is, the whole property's on LC-2A, right? Any consideration as far as what Track B would eventually become? Okay, sorry.
There are no plans for the future portion of that. Typically, though, however, we do not do campus plans. We would not build another church building there. If anything, it would become excess real estate for the church to do recreational facilities with, but we tend to lean away from that because of the cost. So it's probably going to be a piece of property that it's up to the local stake president to make that decision about whether he wants to sell it or not.
Yeah, that'd be my concern, is if you sold it, local commercial could have a lot of different uses in it, and so we wanna make sure that it's appropriate for that.
Yeah. There will be some limitations because the church would be built there as to what would be able to go in there, whether it's a Montessori school or something. The only concern that I would have as a member of the community, which I'm not, would be access to that property would have to come from the south in through a drive element there possibly if you maintain that zoning restriction on no driveways.
Right.
If there were to be a curb cut there, as your initial request included, were you gonna pave that, or how is that gonna look?
We're keeping it natural. We're just, you're talking about parcel B?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that'll be just undeveloped property.
It was granting the ability to make a driveway access in the future.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Yanis, the LC designation, what is the buffer required between the single-family next to it?
It'd be a six-foot masonry wall.
Okay. They'd be required to build that throughout the?
The church would not be required to. Our ordinance stipulates that uses that are allowed within the residential zoning districts do not have to provide that screening, but a commercial use would have to provide that screening.
So if they were to sell the Track B and sell it to a bank or Montessori school or something like that, then they would be required?
Correct, then that would be required.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Council?
Mr. Yanis?
Yes, ma'am.
What are the estimated cars on the days of worship?
I think that would be a question for the applicant. I don't know.
Typically, the number of cars, Rex, where are you at? How many do we normally have? Yeah, so maximum number of parking would be just over 200 parking stalls, but typically we don't use all those. But because of the overlap, one congregation will start using it, and they will overlap for an hour. So before the one congregation leaves, another one has started. And then, so you don't have combined traffic leaving and coming at the same time. It's actually like one congregation coming in of up to 300 people, or I'm gonna say probably about 150 cars. And that's typically what we have coming through. And it's usually not all one big rush either. They kind of filter in because we have meetings before church and meetings after church. We're, for whatever reason, we love meetings, so. Thank you.
Excuse me, sir. I still had a few more questions. You had mentioned the stake conference.
Yes.
What type of traffic are you expecting?
Well, that's a very good question. In the past, we would have all the stake members come, but because of the cost of a building, a stake building is usually a larger building. The church in the last five years has gone away from building a larger church to accommodate 800 to 1,000 people. And because of technology, we're able to, through the satellite or through the internet, we broadcast each building in the stake, and so we don't have an increase in attendance in the building. It's just broadcast to all the buildings.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll stick here. Do you have any more questions?
My next is for Mr. Yanis. So I'm concerned about the lack of Lake Line access, and my question is, why is there, why is staff not recommending Lake Line access?
Our ordinance doesn't allow for driveways onto arterial streets if access can be taken from a lower classification street. And as the property to the south is undeveloped and will develop in the future and will subdivide and provide streets, those streets will intersect with Lake Line, and then that will be the means of providing access to all the properties that front along Lake Line. And the applicant wasn't proposing to utilize a driveway onto Lake Line for the church development. It was just for future development of the Track B. And our position on it was that a driveway is not necessarily prohibited in the future if street connectivity is not made. It could be allowed, but because there's no development being proposed at this time for Track B, we didn't feel like it was appropriate to assume that no street connectivity to Lake Line is feasible at this stage.
So you're stating that staff's recommendation is to allow access from Track B and applicant's request access from Track A?
No, the applicant's proposal for the driveway was for the future when Track B and if Track B is developed, not as a part of the development of the church. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So it wasn't meant to provide access to the church property. And our position is, from the staff side, and the commission's recommendation echoed that, which is that a driveway may be allowed sometime in the future. However, it may not be if street connectivity is provided to Lake Line through the development of the property to the south.
Gotcha.
And so, just to go back to ordinance, so I'm clear. I thought that the access management permitted a driveway every 600 feet.
No, it says that you cannot have access more than every 600 feet, but it also stipulates that all properties that front onto an arterial are to take access off of a lower classification street if that option is available. And so because these properties will subdivide over time, it is the staff's position that that connectivity of a street will be provided in the future that will allow access. So basically, I wish I had the aerial up here. Hang on a second. Here it is. It's not zoomed out exactly where I want it, but so Saw Turn is here, so that's an access point onto Lake Line. And then this is the Gilpin property, and right over here is Vista Ridge subdivision. And the Vista Ridge is going to come through, the street is gonna come through, and it's going to intersect with Lake Line. And we're likely to also have another street even further north that would come in and intersect with Lake Line, because as you can see, this street is Tinto. That's a street in Carneros Ranch, and it runs east-west. And it, as you can see, is stubbed to the property line. It will be extended into the Gilpin property, and there will likely be, depending upon the development pattern that happens on the Gilpin property, there will likely be residential lots that will back up here, so they will have to have a street to provide frontage for those lots. That street will most likely come all the way to the west and intersect right here. And then all these properties, as they develop along here, can cars turn into there, and then they have access into there. And then we limit the total number of access points onto the arterial, thereby increasing the capacity of the arterial and limiting the conflict points of turning movements, especially left-turning movements out of those driveways.
Mr. Yanis, is, I'm sorry.
And so on Saw Turn, the distance from Lake Line, the corner, to the first driveway entrance is?
Stefan?
How far?
I don't remember. Let's see. Where's the scale on that?
I think the issue with that one is that it's dumping onto Lake Line, and Lake Line's an arterial.
My question was, across the street from this?
Across which street?
Across Saw Turn. Isn't that an amenity center?
That's right. That's the amenity center.
So my question is similar in that, is the first turn in, in front of the amenity center, across from the amenity center, or is it in front of those residential lots?
It's across from the amenity center lot. So if you go back to here...
So there shouldn't be a whole lot of traffic going directly in front of those homeowners' properties.
That's the amenity center lot right there. Right. The secondary entrance is across from some of the single-family homes, but the first entrance is across from the amenity center lot.
Okay.
And my question was, how far of a distance from the corner to that first ingress?
Oh, golly. I mean, it looks like it's a couple hundred feet.
It looks like about 105 on the map.
Okay, so it's almost 300 feet then, it looks like. Yeah. It's about 250 to 300 feet to the first driveway.
Okay.
So, Council, I'd like to make a motion to approve this item with Planning and Zoning's recommendations to not permit a right onto Lake Line Boulevard from Track B.
Great. There is a motion by Councilmember Navarrez. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Councilmember Shepherds. Are further discussion, Ms. Cannon?
Yes, I'm sorry. I couldn't hear you. Yes, I'm sorry. I couldn't hear you. What was your, what was your amendment?
The motion is for approval with, uh, P and Z's recommendation.
Of no entrance onto?
On Lakeline.
By right, correct.
By right, okay. I have, I have concerns about that because it, it devalues the opportunity for you guys to sell that, that lot.
That can be addressed.
Well, if somebody comes back and decides to buy that Track B, then they can bring that back to council and bring it back to staff and it can be handled, handled that way. But you don't want, as Mr. Yanis explained, you don't want to give that by right in this section that they're just wanting to develop the church. That, that's speculative on what has to be done in the future with that Track B. So that, that's kind of unrelated at this point.
Are those two parcels subdivided?
Not, not currently, no. They're not.
Is that going to be part of the development process?
It's up to the church. It'll, it'll depend on whether they need to subdivide it for, uh, sale in the future or not. They don't have to at this stage.
Right. As I mentioned this evening, they'd like to use it possibly for recreational services, you know, picnics.
So it is currently all one piece?
That's right.
Um, also, what is the steeple height?
Uh, I do not know.
I don't think we dictate steeple height.
Well, we, the, the city doesn't regulate the height of a steeple, but I don't know what they're proposing to do.
Is there a height of construction? There's not a regulatory height of construction?
Not for steeples. We actually exempt church spires from height restrictions.
Perfect. Did not know that. Okay, great. Thank you.
Great. There is a motion, a second, for approval with P and Z recommendation. Is there further discussion? Okay, we're going to vote. All in favor? Motion does carry. Would you go ahead? Councilmember Stewart, thank you, pro temp. Okay, we're going to move to item number nineteen. Conduct a public hearing on the intent, intention to issue City of Leander, Texas, general obligation refunding bond series two thousand and eighteen to affect savings on debt service. Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Uh, the, the city of Leander was in the bond market this morning with the intent to, uh, refinance approximately, approximately ten point eight million dollars in outstanding debt. Uh, the existing debt was issued in two thousand and ten. I'd like to have our financial advisor, Mr. Chris Allen, come up and give you the results of the, uh, sale this morning. And then you can, uh, conduct the, uh, public hearing and then consider the ordinance to approve the sale.
Great. Mr. Allen?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, um, city manager, and congratulations to the newly elected officials. Um, for the record, my name's Chris Allen. Uh, work with Hilltop Securities. We're financial advisor to the city. Uh, as Robert, uh, Mr. Powers pointed out, we were in the market today. Um, and I'd like, I'm, I'm pleased to be here to, um, you know, go over the, the results of the sale. Um, the city, uh, sold ten point five million of general obligation refunding bond series two thousand and eighteen. We entered the, the market this morning, uh, around eight-thirty, around an hour order period. Um, within, uh, thirty minutes, about eighty-five percent of the loan was sold, uh, meaning it had going-away orders to investors. Um, so as a result of that, we were able to come back and lower the yields, uh, therefore increasing the price that the buyers pay the city. So, uh, ultimately, um, affecting a lower interest rate to the city. Um, I'd like to acknowledge, uh, some of the participants on this transaction. Of course, your bond counsel, Bickerstaff Heath, DeGat, Acosta. Mr. Mendez is in the audience if, if there's any legal questions. Um, the lead manager, the, or the lead underwriter was Raymond James, uh, with a co-managing underwriter of RBC Capital Markets. Both of these underwriting firms were, are included in the city's, uh, underwriting pool, which was established via, uh, request for proposals. Um, and as, and, and last but not least, your, your staff. I mean, I, I, I sometimes fail to mention that, um, the people that I work with at the city, Mr. Powers does an excellent job of, of managing this. There's a lot of work that goes into this, um, behind the scenes that a lot of times you don't see. Um, part of that process includes going to the credit rating agencies. Um, you'll see there on page one, um, Standard and Poor's has affirmed your, um, very good rating of double A. Um, something I'd like to point out, they cited in their report, very strong economy, strong management, strong budgetary performance, very strong budgetary flexibility, very strong liquidity. That's just a reflection on what a good job you guys do with your finances. Moody's, of course, affirmed their rating of double A too. Um, today, as I mentioned, it was, it, it, the market was, was pretty quiet. Um, although was the largest volume, uh, municipal bond volume week, uh, this year. Uh, that, that, there was like some, uh, five point, or eight point nine billion dollars worth of municipal bonds in the market. We've been seeing closer to four and a half, five, six, six billion. So this is the largest market and really the true test of the market. Um, rates have been trending upward, um, slowly with the Fed rate, rate hikes and then the expectation that the Fed's going to raise rates again in the, in the near term. But, um, we have seen this week with the added supply, we did see some downticks in, in interest rates. So it was one of the, uh, better interest rate environments that we've seen over the last couple of months. Last page, I'd just like to kind of talk about some of the particulars of the, the issue. Again, it was ten point five million. Um, we refunded ten point eight six million of GO, um, and refunding bond series two thousand and ten that are currently callable. The gross savings associated with this transaction is four hundred and eighty-five thousand. Um, and that represents sa- savings to the, the taxpayers of the, of the city. So with that, I'll, I'll certainly answer any questions, um, but would certainly recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Counsel, is there any questions?
This is just very exciting. I think we were looking at four hundred thousand and actually to walk away with four, four eighty-five eight. That's awesome. Thank you.
We, we can't take action till we have a public hearing, but we, I'll continue. If anybody has a comment, question?
Very proud of what our city and staff has done. It's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Would anyone like to speak on this item? Would anyone like to speak on this item? Okay, hearing done, I'm going to close the public hearing. We're going to discuss and consider ordinance authorizing the issuance of the City of Leander, Texas Obligation Refunding Bond Series two thousand and eighteen, authorizing the refunding of certain outstanding obligations, levying a continuing direct annual ad verum tax on all taxable property within the city to pay the interest on said bonds and create a sinking fund for the redemption thereof and the assessment and collection of such taxes, authorizing the delivery of an escrow deposit agreement, authorizing the sale thereof and enacting provisions incident and related to the issuance of said bonds. Counsel?
I'll motion to approve.
Second?
It's been a motion made for approval by Councilmember Shepherd with a second by Councilmember Setiquis. Is there further discussion? All in favor? Motion does carry. We are now going to move to our regular agenda. Thank you, Mr. Powers, again for your continued work. And, uh, Mr. Allen, thank you. You've represented us for many, many years and thank you very much. We're going to now move to our regular agenda. Item number twenty. Discuss and consider an interlocal agreement with Brushy Creek Regional Utility Authority, City of Cedar Park, City of Leander and that other city, City of Round Rock, for the zebra mussel control project in the amount of five hundred nineteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars. Mr. Watts?
Well, we all wish zebra mussels were edible and maybe we could get rid of them that way. But any event, zebra mussels are here, zebra mussels are a tremendous detriment to anything that's in the water, particularly our pipelines and our, uh, raw water barges. We already, we've done inspections. There are already zebra mussels, uh, already started depositing on outside of our pumps. We suspect that they are depositing on the, uh, inside of our raw water lines. Uh, we'll have to install a chemical treatment system to take care of that. We're combining forces with BCRUA, which we are a, uh, uh, significant member of at, at around forty-seven percent of participation. We're also combining forces with Seager Park and with our Sandy Creek plant to perform this work all, uh, all as one project for an economy of scale and the design and the construction. And, uh, our part of the overall project is, oh, gosh. And I apologize for that long, uh, page and a half worth about zebra mussels, but, uh, we are, for both BCRUA and Sandy Creek plan, our participation is a total of five hundred nineteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars. And I'll answer any questions you may have.
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, if this is going to be a chemical treatment, what does it do through the water since it's intake? And does it add to our cost of treatment?
It will definitely add to the cost of treatment. In this particular case, it will be using potassium permanganate, which also aids in treatment by oxidizing other taste and odor compounds, other organics. As far as we will not have any pink water, but we won't have any, we won't have zebra mussels either. The zebra mussels will literally clog, you know, I don't care what size line it is, over time. They'll clog the whole thing until the velocity reaches a certain point that they can't deposit.
I understand this is a necessary evil.
Yes, ma'am.
I was just thinking about that. And so the, that the taste and everything would be able to, we'd be able to get rid of that from the treatment.
Well, and you know, a side effect of that would be to improve taste and odor issues.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Watts, this isn't really important, but what's the process like? I mean, do you put the treatment in there and all the zebra mussels float to the top and scoop them out and done or?
No, the, I, I, I'm not sure about the ones that have already deposited, whether the concentration it will be feeding or killing. But what it does is it kills the juveniles and prevents any further deposition.
Gotcha.
So we have to go back in and clean out the ones that are in there already or?
The city council is willing to do that.
Not really. There's, uh, not really any way we can do that. We'll just have to rely upon natural dial for their life cycle. I mean, you know, I don't, I think they live a year or two, so they won't last that long.
Thank you. Great. Counsel? Motion to approve.
I'll second.
It's been a motion made by Pro Tem Siler for approval, second by Councilmember Navarrete. Is there further discussion? All in favor? Motion does carry unanimously. We'll move to item number twenty-one while we're speaking on the BCRUA. Discuss and consider the appointment of council director and citizens director to the board directors of the Brushy Creek Regional Utility Authority, BCRUA. Um, I'll take this one, Mr. Watts.
All right.
The, uh, the authority has two positions. We have a voting director member and we have a citizens director member. While the citizens director member is classified and could be a citizen, we have a kind of handshake agreement with the other two cities and they've all three abided by this. That's always another council member. Those two council members work together and represent one vote on the BCRUA. Um, our council member, uh, Mr. Ron Aberzis had represented as the director, the voting director for the last few years. And, uh, with him no longer on the board, he's not eligible to serve in that capacity anymore. So with that being said, we need to, uh, to put somebody into this spot that, uh, is familiar with the process, has done some service and backfill in the same manner. So I'm going to go ahead and move to, uh, to move Councilmember Navarrete into the voting position. She currently serves as the citizens director. Move her up into the voting position and move Pro Tem Si- excuse me, Pro Tem Siler into the citizens director. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Shepherds. Is there further discussion? All in favor? Motion does carry. Before we move on, I'm going to ask Mr. Aberzis, I want him to come up. I want to, uh, thank you for your service in this capacity. Um, you've served how many years on BCRUA? Four? Three, yeah. It's almost the whole time you've been on council.
Yeah, I think it was dropped on me probably within the first three months. And I'm literally dropped on me. A book was this thick.
Yeah, there you go. If you could tell us a little bit about the current status of where you're at.
Um, uh, right now, we're in the process of, um, the, the general, the current general manager, Tom Guyer, is, is, um, retiring. And so there, we are now in the process of, uh, interviewing. I think there's three candidates that are being interviewed right now. So hopefully within the next month or so, um, they will be hiring a new general manager. And, um, based on that, and I think with the, the way the ci- the, the board and the whole process and the, the water treatment plant, the way it's, it's grown, I think now we need to take a step. When it was established, the BCR board was established, it was put together rather hastily and, and there was not a lot of thought put into how it was run and how all the responsibilities between all the, the different moving parts, um, were put together. So I, I think it, it, with, with the, the hiring of a new general manager, I think it's, uh, it behooves the, whoever's on the board to think about, um, revamping the bylaws and getting everybody clear on what all the roles are for all the people involved with this because it is a three-city, um, entity and there are, there are, I mean, each city has their own, uh, part to the, to the agreement. And Leander's part is to actually do, or the hiring, they actually, the citizen, the people who work on it are Leander employees. So I think with that being said, I think we need to make sure that we keep, you know, the, uh, moving forward with where we are as a, a city. And I think we need to protect our position because, um, it is a three-city and I think we need to be very upfront and forward with those other two cities to let them know that we, we are serious about this project and that we want to be heard and that we want to be taken seriously as, uh, a three, a, a full partner in this endeavor and not to be pushed around, which I think has happened in the past. And, and that's one of the reasons why I've been fighting so hard to get to the point where we're at right now, where we have a new general manager coming in and the opportunity to, to at least look at the bylaws and see if we can't make this run a little better. That's just my opinion. And I'm open to have any discussion with any, if you want to get any more information on it and.
That would be valuable.
Yeah, so I, I think, uh, I, I, I would have, whoever's on the board, I think you guys should meet and talk with. Wayne is intimately aware of all the issues that go with the wastewater treatment plant and the, uh, the upcoming phase two, uh, with the deep water intake. And, uh, Paige is, Ms. Sines has been a, a great help to me with all the, um, help with thinking about how to, to revamp the bylaws to get this to be more of a, a well-functioning sort of, and, and make sure. And it's not that it's not functioning. I think it just needs to be, the, the roles and responsibilities of the general manager with the OC and the board, I think they all have to be, um, restated.
And just to update on that, as, uh, to reiterate what Mr. Aberzis just said, uh, we've already brought that to the BCRUA with our legal counsel and we're currently working on different ideas, uh, to get that in place, revamping the bylaws and make them a little bit stiffer for us.
Right.
Um, kind of enhance our stake in the game. So that's already in place. Uh, or not in place, it's in the works and should be in place shortly.
Right.
Hopefully, and with the new gen, this is a very critical time to make sure those things happen so that we start off on the right foot with them and then move forward.
That's why we just appointed you to the voting.
Right. And I, I think, I think Ms. Navarrete will do a great job at leaning in that effort.
Thank you.
I hope you get up to speed as soon as possible.
Yes, sir.
It's great to have both people knowledgeable about what's going on.
Hand in hand with staff and Mr. Watts. We'll get it.
Mr. Watts, did you have anything else on this item?
Thank you.
Part of my, part of my discussion with Mr. Siler about this item, I mean, asking if he would serve this capacity. He currently serves on two other, as the council liaison to two other boards. So I'm going to ask, uh, that on June seventh meeting, we put a board appointment position open for a council liaison to the arts commission. So if we would do that and replace, we'll, we'll pull, um, Mr. Siler off the arts unless he gets reappointed to the arts commission. We'll take him off that committee and that committee will be open for the next one.
You've done a really good job.
Yeah, he has done a very good job. We'll talk about that the next meeting. We'll just do that as a future gen item if you would please.
Mayor, and on the twenty-first of June, we'll be back, uh, because all of these terms expire on July first. So we'll have to reappoint. We'll be back for reappointments on the twenty-first.
Mr. Aberzis?
Sorry, first.
It's good.
Would, would you like to go through the, tell them where we're at in the process for the hiring? Yeah, that's probably good.
Sure, yes. All right, um, we've had a headhunter, uh, that, uh, gosh, they've been recruiting people since, uh, since January. And, uh, we interviewed five candidates. We had twelve, um, eleven that the headhunter recommended to us. And we interviewed, we selected five. The operations committee selected, selected five, my counterparts in Cedar Park and Round Rock and myself. We interviewed those five and out of those five, we have selected two to send to the board for interviews, both of which are highly qualified. Interviews are scheduled, tentatively scheduled for the next board meeting, which is the twenty-third, which is next Wednesday. Now, we're trying to reschedule that to the thirtieth of May in order to allow Cedar Park on the twenty-fourth to appoint their new board members.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Watts. We're going to move to item number twenty-two. Discuss and consider. Discuss, consider an amendment, an addendum to the facilities agreement with Travis County Municipal Utility District Number Twenty-One, by and between Treviso LTD Limited, Travis County Municipal Utility District Number Twenty-One, and the City of Leander for the Treviso subdivision Phase Two, Section Two F, Two G, and Two H, and authorizing the city manager to execute any and all necessary documents. Mr. Watts?
This addendum to the facilities agreement was put together by our city attorney, Ms. Sines, and by our assistant city engineer, Ms. Crawford. Basically, what this is, is Treviso, it's more cost-effective for them to construct interim lift stations as opposed to the permanent lift stations that will actually serve these areas in the future, because as we all know, they're basically at the top of the hill right now, building houses and wastewater lines and so forth. And the permanent lift stations are approximately five thousand feet away from the current locations. And basically, this is, it's, I would call it a glorified pump and haul agreement, but it's actually more than that. The facility will be owned and operated by Treviso. It will be operated by a contract operator, Crossroads, who's an experienced operator. And staff request approval.
Great, council?
A motion to approve.
I'll second.
Been a motion made by Councilmember Stevenson for approval, seconded by Councilmember Sheppard. Is there further discussion?
That wasn't me.
I'm sorry? Councilmember Navarrete?
It was Navarrete, yes.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Navarrete made the second. I have five women all saying something to me. They all sound the same to me at the time, so great. We have a motion and second for approvals or further discussion? All in favor? Motion does carry. Great, thank you, Mr. Watts. Item number twenty-three, I have a speaker on this item as well. I am not going to be able to read the Spanish content here, but I will read the item. Discuss, consider an ordering and establishing procedures and say in the date for runoff election for the mayoral race, providing for the approval of election judges and voting clerks, and provided for related matters. If you'll notice in your packet, the way that we do this for runoff is we actually contract with Williamson County. Williamson County has a fee, that estimated fee on this amount is roughly twenty-five thousand dollars to hold that election. That is for one location, is that correct, Ms. Craftery?
Yes.
That is for one location, it's the twenty-five thousand. Each additional location would be an additional four thousand dollars to add those additional. The four locations that are available are Pat Bryson, Leander Public Library, Leander High School, and Rouse High School. I don't think, since we don't have a, can we get that out? I'll just read it. We have the totals of what was voted where. At Pat Bryson Hall, there were three hundred and fifty votes cast on Election Day. This doesn't count the early voting or anything, or the absentee votes or any of that mail-ins. Three hundred and fifty at Pat Bryson, which is here. The library had three hundred and fifty-two, Leander High School had a hundred and ninety-five, and Rouse High School had ninety-three. So council, it doesn't, it's up to us whether we want to do the one location. That's usually the norm that happens on these type of elections, or if we want to add one or all of those additional locations. But as we add those, they're four thousand dollars per expense to the taxpayer. So just so we know that what that is.
Mayor, I believe this is already an expense to the city.
Correct. Before we take, before we take action, I have a speaker. You can go ahead, if you want to say.
Yeah, I would just like to say that I think we need to keep it here at Pat Bryson Municipal Hall and just have the one location. I don't, I think the city's used to having just the one location in a runoff situation and just to save money, I think that's what we need to do.
Great, I do have a speaker, I'm going to recognize Jeff Jenkins, if he wants to come up. Mr. Jenkins, if you'll state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Jeff Jenkins, eighteen hundred Palo Alto. Thank you for letting me speak.
You bet.
Appreciate it, mayor. Thank you, council members. It's really a right to vote. And to take away voting places, you're taking away somebody's right to vote. If there's somebody that can't make it all the way over here that lives over by Leander High School and is in detriment of not being able to drive or anything else, and they make it over there by walking or whatever, you're taking away their right to vote. So you should at least have two places on both sides of the city to where at least there's some people that can, that can't drive all the way over here or don't know where this is, where they can go and vote as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Council, back to us.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve two locations, Pat Bryson Hall and the library, which had higher turnout than Hall, to encourage accessibility and to get all of the citizens out to vote.
Is there a second on that item?
I'll second it.
So we have a motion for Pat Bryson Municipal Hall and a sec, I mean, and the Leander Public Library, those are the two, that would put the estimated cost at twenty-nine thousand dollars. And we do have a motion and a second as a further discussion?
So that's an additional four thousand dollars.
Additional four thousand, add the additional location. Setiquist?
I think that, you know, we've already approved lots of money tonight. We're talking about four thousand dollars to prevent voter confusion during a runoff, which is already confusing, especially when we have the state and county runoffs as well. I mean, we're looking at potential voter fatigue. I think it's, it's probably a good idea to keep all of the same locations open as people went to the first time.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Craftery.
Can I ask for clarification in the motion? Are we talking about the additional polling locations specifically for Election Day or early voting in Election Day?
I believe that, I'll ask for clarification, I believe that we would look at it for just Election Day, but.
Well, let me ask you, is the four thousand dollars for, for both early voting and Election Day?
No. It's just additional four thousand for Election Day.
Just for Election Day?
So I just, just to make a comment, mayor, if I may, I think if Leander was, the city municipality was the size of, say, if we were Leander SD board members and you're looking at, you know, several, you know, hundred square miles, I think it would be, you know, we would be cutting off people that might not be able to drive an hour from one end to the district to the other. But the size of Leander at this time being, I think, one, we're already looking, you know, like I said, at the additional twenty-five thousand dollars to fund, to fund that anyway.
Sure, so I'm going to get clarification. Are we looking at just the one day for Election Day?
Yes, mayor, but I would like to add to that, that we are only talking about four thousand dollars for a mayoral campaign, and we had twice the turnout than we've ever had in any other election. I think the people have spoken. We need to hear them. And four thousand dollars compared to the twenty-five we already have to spend, I think is a non-issue.
Okay, so your motion is for Pat Bryson Hall, Leander Library on Election Day?
Yes, sir.
Great. Pat Bryson would be the only location for early voting, is that correct, Ms. Craftery?
Yes, sir.
Yes, correct. Are you okay with that motion, with that second? Great, so we do have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion?
I didn't.
Okay, Setiquist?
I think when we're looking at the numbers, Leander Library did have more votes than Pat Bryson did, and it's only two, but it's a significant amount of the population that came out to vote. The next closest after the library and city hall is Leander High School with, you know, just under two hundred. I think if we're cutting off these locations and confusing voters, we're borderline into the territory of voter suppression. And I think that we owe it to the public to make voting locations accessible and allow every voice to be heard, no matter which way it goes. And I think, you know, we owe it to both of the candidates that they have that shot as well.
Okay, we do have a motion and second as a further discussion. The motion is for two locations, Pat Bryson Hall, Leander Public Library on Election Day, Pat Bryson only for early voting. Further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion does carry five-two with council member Navarrete and the mayor voting nay. We will now move to item number twenty-four, receive the water use and supply update for the month of April two thousand and eighteen. Mr. Womack?
Good evening, mayor and council. As of today, the combined storage for both Lakes Travis and Buck Cannon is a little less than what's in your executive summary. It's one point six-six million as opposed to the one point six-eight-one million acre feet. That's roughly eighty-three percent full. If you look at this slide, this is basically a six-month projection, looking forward from the date of the, of the study, or projection is April first. Six months in the future is October two thousand and eighteen. You can see in the past what the historical combined storage was, all the way back to last April. And you'll see that it was nearly a hun, or right at a hundred percent or just a little bit less full back this time a year ago, and it has steadily decreased over, over the past year and we're at this point now. And you can see the projections all the way out to October of this year. And these two red lines here, March first and July first, those are trigger dates for when the LRA can determine how much water, if any, is released to the downstream agricultural irrigation districts. There's four of them, I believe. But if you look at that, normally, the lakes are considered full at two point zero-one million acre feet, but they're actually managed as full, just a little bit less at that green line. That's because of limitations to Lake Buchanan and the spillway. But the projections, there are basically four projections into the future. There's a wet conditions, this top one, and then a median, and then dry and extremely dry. If you'll, the LRA has published inflows for the month of April, and they're nine thousand four hundred and seventeen acre feet, which is nine percent of the normal historical flows for April. So a normal historical inflow for all of the Highland Lakes would be a hundred thousand And now for the Leander numbers. If you look at this chart, in the middle, there's a column of red, excuse me, blue and red numbers. The red are for April two thousand and eighteen, and the blue is April two thousand and eighteen. The red is for April two thousand and seventeen. If you'll go down, you can pick out the peak day for each one, highlighted in yellow. That's an eight point four-nine million gallons on the eighteenth of April, and then the previous one was seven point one-one million gallons. Both of those are Wednesdays, I believe, usually are peak days, not always, but most often, peak days occur on residential watering days, Wednesdays and Thursdays. But if you continue down the column, you'll see that April for two thousand and eighteen, almost two hundred and seventeen million gallons for the month versus a hundred and fifty-nine for April of two thousand and seventeen. That's approximately fifty-eight million gallons more this year than the previous April. And then further down, you'll see that the total connections, sixteen thousand, I believe that's eight hundred and thirty-eight, and then versus the previous year, fifteen thousand three hundred and thirty-four. It's roughly just over fifteen hundred more connections, total connections from, from this time last year. If you look over here to the right, you'll see the, the same information displayed graphically. You'll see the peak day for April seventeenth, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eighteen on the eighteenth, and then last year's, last April's. And then over here to the far right at the bottom, you'll see that, yes, eight point four-nine is a new peak day for the year, but that won't stand for long. Surely, that will go higher as we move into the summer months. This next slide shows the twelve-month rolling averages and the monthly water use for both water treatment plants and then the two combined. The lighter blue is BCRUA, the darker blue is Sandy Creek, and then orange is the combined. The twelve-month rolling averages are the solid lines. And you'll see, as we go into the summer months, they've been steadily increasing. But that, you'll see that the monthly averages also started to climb as we head into the summer months, as those, those ramp up into May, June, July. But I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have on, on these, these graphs.
It's amazing much less water we used last April than this April.
It got, it was wetter.
Yeah. But it's hot either, was it?
Right.
Any additional questions? Great, thank you, Mr. Womack, we appreciate it. And just for the new council members, we get a update once a month. Mr. Womack? We'll move to item number twenty-five, council member closing statements, Ms. Navarrete.
Always first, darn it. Just want to tell everybody, just please, it's been a crazy election cycle here in the city of Leander, kind of unprecedented for this time. And just hope everybody have patience, look into your candidates. For goodness sakes, please do your homework. Look into your candidates, make your vote count. Look into the, looking at the Parks Department, Family Fun Campout and Day at the Lake, looks like a really cool activity, thanks to the Parks Department, Mr. Temmons. So check that out, be part of your community, get involved. Thanks.
Ms. Stevenson?
Well, yes, I want to congratulate the other two new council members who, who successfully won, and I know that they, they worked hard in their campaigns. I'm glad to see that Ron has stayed through the ending of the meeting here, and I'm glad to see that you did, so that I can go say goodbye to you one more time. We still have the mayor election coming up, and I would just like to say that I'm hoping that everyone can be respectful of each other. What has happened up to this point, some have not been as respectful as, as, as maybe we could have been. And I'm just hoping that everyone out there will learn to be respectful and kind and at least appreciate that there are two willing to step up and devote a lot of their, their time and volunteer. Nobody gets paid in these positions. We're here solely just because we want to serve.
Thank you. Sheppard?
I'm not going to beat that dead horse. Go vote! But I do want to commend both of our new council women for getting involved tonight and speaking up and making a motion and, and addressing their concerns. And I look forward to serving another year here on the dais and seeing how we progress together.
Great, thank you. Shannon, you're next.
Oh, it starts with me, all right. I want to thank everyone who helped me through this campaign, guiding me. Obviously, I'm not a political person, never done this before, and it was extremely rough. So I, I want to thank everyone for that. I also do want to remind everyone that we are not done with this election cycle. It is very important that we keep up the energy and the focus to elect a mayor, and everyone definitely do your due diligence on that. I would just like to say that I hope that during this next process, we will keep in mind that future businesses and corporations that we hope to bring here, to bring us sales tax, property tax, and jobs, are watching what we as a government and as citizens do. And so I would hope that we will all rise to the occasion and act in a professional and mature and caring manner. I'm very excited to get to work with the citizens in the city that I love so much. So thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Great, thank you, Pro Tim.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to congratulate Ms. Cannon, Ms. Setiquist, and Ms. Stevenson for their new jobs up here. It should be fun. And I also want to remind everybody that the Old Town Street Festival is this Friday night, Saturday. I hear there's a really good band playing at eleven AM. My wife and her band will be playing, so come out and hear her, eleven to two. And are we still doing the workshop next Thursday for Northline? Is that still on the calendar? Do we?
I don't know, I haven't seen the agenda yet. It's the next meeting.
Is it next meeting? So in three weeks? Okay, next meeting, Northline, and then the ACC tour is also coming up in a couple weeks too, before our next meeting. So make sure everybody has that on the calendar.
Great, thank you. Setiquist?
I want to thank Ron Aberzis for your years of service to the city, and I really hope that you, you stay committed. And Marshall Hines, I see that you've sat here through the whole night, and I hope that we can connect after the meeting. You both ran great campaigns and you're both amazing citizens, and thank you so much for all of your service. And please stay involved. And Marshall, maybe we'll see you up here next year. Congratulations, ladies, on the election. And I just want to echo what pretty much everyone else has said, this has been a crazy couple of months, and we're bound for another crazy five weeks or so. And I hope that we can all remember that we're neighbors in the end of this, and let's be civil and get along and really show what's great about Leander, which is the people and who we are to each other. And also, I just wanted to thank Mr. Mayor, Mr. Kegel, for the warm welcome that you both have given me and helping bring me up to speed. And I look forward to working with you both. Thank you.
Thank you. As always, I want to thank staff, you guys hanging with us, I appreciate it very much. The time is nine fifty-eight, all entertaining motion adjourned?
So be it.
With our adjourn. (applause)